All right, we are live. Good evening, everyone. We want to welcome you to the special meeting of the South Ucalinhurst Board of Education Work Session, today being Tuesday, April thirteenth. Good evening to our administrators, Dr. Reed, all those that are watching live with us and those that happen to join us later. May we start with a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mr. Bloomberg?
Present.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Lee?
Present.
Mrs. Ryan?
Here.
Thank you for that, and we can go right into discussion item two point one, college and career readiness.
Yes, we have two discussion items this evening. Uh, we have a guest, Mr. Williamson, our high school principal will talk along with Ms. Thompson, our assistant superintendent with college and career readiness. And then we're going to give a short update with regards to some of our extended learning opportunities, which Assistant Superintendent Mr. Capable give. And for the purpose of the, the screen, um, those are just, uh, no action items this evening, but those are the two discussion items. So I'm going to stop sharing the agenda and it does allow for a better engagement of those that are in the meeting. Okay, so, um, Ms. Thompson or Mr. Williamson, I don't know what, who wants to start first. And, um, and actually before they get started, this is just a snapshot of some of the many changes uh, and other things that we're going to be doing in the upcoming school year. Uh, but we'll, we'll give more updates as we develop things as well. But we're going to speak a little bit more to what's happening, uh, at the high schools. So I'm going to mute my microphone and.
So I'll begin. As you all know, uh, we had the opportunity to have, um, Joe Nicholas join us to provide some consultation work with us, looking at our master's schedules, looking at things that we are able to do to better support our students. And in doing so, um, he has been working with, with Mr. Williamson and all of our building principals, actually, to, um, look at things and how we can do things differently and offer more opportunities for us. So what Mr. Williamson is going to prepare this evening is part of that work, um, that he had already been doing. And then certainly with the support and the work, um, with Mr. Nicholas has been able to develop the plan that he'll share this evening. So, Mr. Williamson, I will defer to you.
Good evening. Thank you for, uh, allowing me this opportunity to speak to everyone. It's an interesting school year and planning for next school year has already been in the works and it's exciting work that we're taking under. And I'm proud to be able to share with you some of the things that we've done and what we're about to do. So as Melissa stated, Joe, um, has been working with the, the principals throughout the district for the last two months or so. And during that time, he's met with myself, um, a number of times. He's met with the admin team from the high school and then he's met with the counselors and then collectively. And during this opportunity to meet, we discussed how we currently plan and build schedules at the high school and some things that we can do differently. Because each year at the high school, our master's schedule is so jam packed because of singletons like, um, fine arts, um, band, choir, orchestra, and then Excel tech is a huge component. So there were some things that we talked about how we want to do, um, differently for next school year so that we can make sure that our schedule meets the needs of all students 100% of the time, instead of just 85% or 90% of the time. So one of the things that we talked about was career planning. And working with Melissa's office, we talked about the 2020 Aligning Opportunities in Northeast Ohio Report, which is an annual report that is sent to high schools each year. And it gives a snapshot of the career fields that students in high schools will be facing once they leave. So what we did is we took that report and we identified area businesses in the following clusters, medical, manufacturing, technology, engineering, and financial. And what we did is we, we contacted and generated a list of all those businesses in our immediate area, no more than 35 miles around. And we started to make contact to arrange what we're calling an upcoming spring business luncheon series, which is going to begin May 5th. And we're going to have it three consecutive Wednesdays, May 5th, May 12th, and May 19th. We've identified specific, um, clusters of career fields to be honored and recognized on one of those Wednesday afternoons from 1:00 to 3:30. And, um, Eddie Hall has been very integral in this process. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention his work and everything he's doing to help us augment this prob, this process at the high school. So we've made contacts and we are generating a lot of publicity and buzz because ultimately what we're trying to do is create opportunities for our students. We want to expose them to the area businesses. We want the area businesses to be exposed to our students, ideally networking, potential internships, potential jobs, potential, um, careers when our students come back into the area after they go away from brush, after they graduate, go to college, graduate, come back and start their own families. We want those networks that they start to establish with our area businesses to begin now. So we've done that process and we're excited about that piece. And Melissa's been very supportive with, um, resources and backing us with this, um, opportunity. While working on that piece, we've also identified a need at the high school. We're developing a career planning course for ninth grade students. This is going to begin the pathways for students to meet that robust Ohio means job readiness seal, which is a part of the, um, seals that students can earn to graduate, beginning with the class of 2023 and beyond. The idea of this course is for students to participate in soft skills, preparing them for identifying potential careers that they might be interested in so that they can begin to visit. And then eventually by the time they become seniors, they'll complete a two week, um, field study where they'll go out into the field that they think they want to go into. They'll experience what it's like to be in that particular field, take some notes, develop a presentation and come back to the high school and present it to a, a group of staff members or a committee. So we're really excited about that and that's going to align with our transitioning career course, which is in our 11th grade and in our 12th grade course, college and career readiness. So that is what I have to share with you folks at this moment regarding that piece. I know, uh, Dr. Reed, Ms. Thompson, and Mr. Capable will, um, explain or introduce additional things along these items in the near future. So, uh, if there's any questions, I'll gladly hopefully be able to answer. If not, I will, uh, bow to Dr. Reed or Ms. Thompson to, uh, take the question.
One thing I will add is, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Falkenberg. Um, making and connecting all of the dots. So you will recall that in December, I believe, December, January sport meeting, you approved our, um, the graduation seals. So this is connected because this will allow our young people to be in that pathway of earning the seals and being able to demonstrate and start early, as Mr. Williamson has indicated with our ninth grade. You'll also recall that connection of Transio. That was the product that we mentioned to you, that Eddie Hall and that you approved for us to enter into that agreement that will track the seals. So as part of this class, our students will be able to work on their, um, success plans, the graduation plans, things that are required by the Ohio Department of Education. So, so I wanted to just share, this is connecting all of the dots. Sometimes things are happening, um, you know, one month we're, you know, sharing something and, and asking you to approve. And so this is the culminating effort of how it's all coming together. So you can see, and usually I am very excited about what's happening because it's bringing everything together and meeting the vision that we've desired for a while with those internships, making those connections with our business partners, um, and letting them see, um, a snapshot of what's happening, you know, through the luncheon, but also creating those opportunities for our students to engage with them in meaningful ways, hopefully again with those internships. So this is an exciting time, um, of how things are coming together. So, so thank you to Mr. Williamson also truly of, of seeing the vision and taking it and, and making it happen and come to fruition.
I was wondering, how does this differ from that, that end process? You know, that when the seniors, um, have their internship and then come to share it, how is, is that different from senior project?
Uh, that's a great question. I anticipated, uh, Ms. Falkenberg asking that because when, uh, years ago, if you remember the senior project, a lot of seniors would leave and they would come back the last several weeks and then do their presentation. It's a little similar to that. Um, this piece is actually going to build upon each layer, beginning with the ninth grade. Um, we're looking at a career planning one type course. And then when they're in 10th grade, they'll transition into a second piece of that. And then, and when they're a junior, they're going to take that transitioning career course. During that class, they are going to do a one to two day job shadow experience where that is where they think they want to go into in terms of a potential career or job field. And then when they get into that senior course, which is the college and career readiness, they're going to, uh, expand that one or two day visit into a two week experience where they're going to learn everything about what that career needs in terms of what are the requirements to obtain that position? What is the education required? They're going to, um, gather as much information as possible so they can develop a nice little portfolio or some type of presentation and they're going to come back and share that with the staff. Um, it's similar to the senior project of old. Um, we are, we're having to do some things differently so we can make sure that it's up to date based upon the guidelines from the state as well as, um, it's in line with that Ohio means job readiness seal, which is, that's a rather important seal. And everything that we're doing ultimately, ideally as a ninth grader comes to the high school, by the time they leave as a 12th grader, the goal is to have 100% of our students attain that particular seal. And if we can do that, that is a huge, huge, huge feather in our cap as a high school, as a district, and as a South Ucalinhurst community. And, and we're really excited about this because it starts with the networking that we're beginning right now with these area businesses. So we're looking forward to hosting the luncheons, um, on the 5th, 12th, and 19th of May, collaborating, getting them to see what our, um, building's about, getting them to be acclimated to our students, so our students can be acclimated to them. They're going to provide us with guest speakers. They're going to provide us with opportunities to go and visit their facilities. And hopefully these are going to be sustainable relationships that will only benefit the students in our community so that their lives will be that much greater than what they already are currently. So i- it's really an opportunity. Uh, when Melissa said, hey Carl, I want you to take a look at this. She didn't have to give us the ball too much because we just ran with it because this is, this is something that we really think, um, is going to put brush, um, on that spotlighted map even more so.
And then, I have one more question. Um, each year, so understand they're going to start as freshmen. Will they, am I talking loud enough? I'm sorry.
My computer's not the best.
Okay, will they have a, is, this is a separate class that they'll be taking in addition to their other, um, coursework?
So the plan is, ideally, we're supposed to be preparing all students for career planning. And, and I know Ms. Thompson's going to have a plan to share with you folks, so I'm not going to steal her thunder. So all we're doing is we're taking the ball that is being delivered to us when the kids come to us from the junior high. And then when we get that ball, we're going to take it to a different playing field where ninth graders will take this career planning one course. And then as they transition to 10th grade, they'll take a, a second course. And then as we go into Excel tech opportunities, students who go into Excel tech will not participate in the third level course because CTE, Excel tech will take care of that piece. But our students at the high school, not in Excel tech, will have this opportunity and this component to meet these necessary skills that they must have when they graduate from the high school. And then it'll transition to 12th grade. So we're, we're trying to make it so it's smooth, painless, and, uh, easy transition.
One, one of the things that Mr. Williamson's referring to is, um, we are working on a K-12 framework of career readiness, um, and, and other type of, um, you know, you talk about soft skills. One of the things that when I talk to area businesses, um, some of the things that they've talked about, s- students aren't successful, and I don't just mean SCL students. You're talking about people transitioning from school to work is, is the lack of, of soft skills that they have, what it takes to be successful in that area. And so, um, that's one of the things we, we want to embed that, uh, you know, at an early age of what that really means to be, um, a contributing member to your organization and what those soft skills are. And so we're kind of looking, starting at the high school because of the coursework and that needs, but, but it doesn't start there. And so we're, you know, we're going to be working on this next month and hopefully in May, we can introduce to you some of the other changes that I know Ms. Thompson's excited about and some of the ideas that I have with regards to, uh, how do we bring this down to lower, lower levels? I mean, one of the things that someone says, you know, there's kind of like a, a teacher shortage and, and there's not enough teachers and, 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 and things like that. Well, in my, in my family, my dad was an educator, you know, and my brother became a teacher. So it almost seemed like a natural thing, that's what you do. But a lot of kids, if, if, you know, maybe don't even know at an early age, they would make, I'm just giving one example, they would make a good teacher because they have a certain skill set. And so these are things of, of career rareness. I mean, like I said, in my family, I was well aware of it because it was in my family. So it's, it's just a lot of different exposure at an early age. And it's a, a very holistic appro- approach to being, um, what we would call all of our brush graduates will be career bound, not necessarily college bound, but career, not get a job, but have a career. And I think that's one thing, I was talking to the head of, uh, the electricians union. Um, and actually, uh, for, um, you can make a pretty good living for that. It's a good, a great school to career with things. And one of the things he told me is a lot of times they go through a five-year apprenticeship program, which is really important. People, you know, think that, and they actually need to be able to have good communication skills and good collaboration skills. He said, you'd be surprised, you'd get these people that you, you have to work on job site to job site to job site. And sometimes it's different people and many times they have a, an inability to get along and adapt to different job sites and expectations. And so that's one of the things we're talking about is, is that you can have an interest in a field, but it's those other skills that we want to create and opportunities for our students so they can be successful, um, you know, not with the technical piece, but the non-technical piece as well. So anyways, that, you know, I go on, I'm very excited. I'm, as you can see, I'm excited too, because I think this is a real great opportunity, uh, for.
So Lynd, so Lynd, I have two things to say. It, it makes me excited because I feel like we are standing by our, uh, kind of, I want to say like the equality piece. Cause it makes me think of when a kid comes in and they want to go on the honors diploma track. They start in that seventh grade, eighth grade, then they go ninth grade and they keep track of how they can be on track to get that honors diploma. And I think that's very, that's very fair because just because a group of students or certain students don't want to go on the honors track for diploma, doesn't mean that they don't have a plan. So you're equating the academic piece and the career readiness piece. So that's one thing that it makes me think. And then it makes me think of how they graduate, you know, the, some of the kids in Cleveland proper, I know because it's over there, they graduated from high school and then they go to Job Corps because they don't know what to do. So now you've got almost like the Job Corps component in the educational realm of ninth through 12. And then lastly, um, I always use my family as guinea pigs, but it was my kid who's 12th grade sat down with me in December and said, "Mom, how does a 17 or 18-year-old start their life?" That was his statement to me. And he literally was like, "What does it mean to be undecided in college? I'm not paying this money to go to college and I don't know what I want to do. So you want me to pay them to sit down in a whole bunch of undecided classes and hope I make a decision before my money runs out or I get to the third year?" So I think that's going to help mold a lot of students who just don't know. And it's not that they don't know because they don't care. I come from a pretty decent household over here and that was my kid that said, "How do I start my life?"
Well, I can tell you this, if you look at statistics and I'll use my own family. You know, my, I, one child, she's successful. She made three major changes when she got to college. And I would have liked that she had have known a little bit better before that piece and, and that. So, so that, that, that in itself, I think we, what we want to do is expose, nothing's a guarantee, but expose them and where, where they actually even have a self-evaluation of who they are, where their skills they think is a good match for them. And, and that in itself will, you know, you know, not because someone else. And then, then knowing what are some of those job or career opportunities that make a good match for that? Because that's one of the things where if you look at statistics of, of college freshmen, many of them change their career path by the end of their freshman year. And they're, you know, they're at another one. Sometimes it transfers very well and other times, again, that's money that, that people have, have paid. So I think what we are trying to do is really, uh, again, expose them way before, um, you know, uh, the high school, uh, you know, and obviously the internships are, are, are a great thing. But I think that's the piece where, and sometimes the internships will tell them, "Man, I thought I wanted to do this and there's no way that I am a match for this." And I think that will help them to, to not be so undecided at, at some point where they really have a, a pathway. Um, and we're, we believe we're creating opportunities, whether it's, again, you can go college, but it doesn't matter if it's college or if it's school to work, it's a career. And I think that's the biggest, biggest thing. Yeah, oh, Neil.
Um, I, everything I've heard, I think is absolutely wonderful. Um, it's a long time coming and that's not to speak to just brush. It's a long time coming to, um, public education. Uh, the only thing I quite finally, quite know that I want to do when I grow up is to retire. I still don't know what I want to do. Um, what I do know is after 27 years, I do not want to be a fundraiser anymore. Um, I, I think one of the key components of this awareness piece is for students to learn how to be self-aware so that those that go to college can be aware of who they are and what makes them tick, what do they enjoy doing? Um, I reflect back from when I was in college and quite frankly, the things that I learned about myself and things that I enjoy doing are essentially a lot of the same things today. Um, and didn't necessarily become aware of that until in a career that went way too long. Um, a- and I really think for those students going to college, that self-awareness that they bring with them is going to help them be able to navigate, what do I do to be successful in college for when I get out? And for those students that are going into career, um, that the same thing will happen with them. Um, a- and kudos to you guys.
Oh, thank, you know, thank you. I think, uh, you know, like I said, this is, this is, um, you know, scratching the surface. I think it, we've finally been putting it together. I mean, I, I actually, uh, presented something to Ms. Thompson about, I don't know, a month or so ago. And she goes, "Are you serious?" I go, "I'm serious." And so she ran with it and, and I think it was just the concept of what we're talking about and really developing something at a, at a younger age. And I think it was also with my conversations, is, um, I've been reaching out to a lot of area folks. Like I said, anything from Local 38, which is Electricians Union. I was on the phone with him, um, Liberty Mutual right over here in, in, um, Independence. And they're such a fast-growing company. They're looking for folks that, for school to work. And it's not that many of these kids can't go to college, but they're, they're actually could hire them right out of high school and then start paying for the college and make some really good money. And so I've been talking to, uh, the vice president of that company and just different things. And, you know, really using this time of, when we talk about reinventing ourselves and revitalizing our schools, the pandemic, one of, I think the good thing that would kind of come out, this is the third R piece of our, 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 our plan, reopening, you know, recovery and revitalizing our schools, is this is just such a great opportunity to, you know, to get, um, you know, something like this. I don't want to say something like this, but it's really the, the mindset and the philosophy and, and just, uh, of, of, of a, I want to call, I don't want to be a traditional, we don't want to be a traditional public school district. We want it to be something that's different. And I think this is just one, one piece, so we're excited. I think, you know, I appreciate, um, Mr. Bloomberg's, uh, that feedback. And I wholeheartedly agree with the self-awareness. Um, like I said, my one daughter was great and outstanding in math and sciences, only to find out that she was going towards a career that didn't meet her personality. Uh, you know, working in a lab by yourself and being isolated was something she had the great technical skills, uh, but not the people part that she really needed. And that ran its course. That's only going to run its course for so long and think, you know, I need to do something else. And I'm glad, you know, it's never too late, like you said. But, but that's the piece of, I wish she would have, we would have helped, been able to help more of the, the self-awareness in looking at not just the technical piece of how they score high on something, but the other piece of that, that part as well. So, yeah.
All the kids will feel valued.
Exactly. So.
I have a, oh. I just had a quick question about if we have ideas for companies that might be interested in participating, who should we contact?
Carl. You can contact me, yes. Um, we have approximately 86, um, contacts and um, three quarters away, uh, done making contact with them so that at least they know who we are. We're talking to them about the upcoming luncheon. So, uh, any, any information you have, feel free to share that with me. Upload it into our Google Doc between, um, Eddie Hall, myself, Kristi Myers, uh, we'll make contact. The art department is developing the invitations. The art department is developing the invitations, so we're kind of excited. Um, I I kinda walked into a little bit of a landmine with that. When I asked them for help that, you know, I was like, okay, this is what I need, this is what I want. And the next thing you know, I was having to pick font size and colors. We're, we're excited for that and um, we're good to go with that piece. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson.
Kudos to you, Mr. Williamson. Thank you very much. You, you're doing some really good things up there at Brush and I really am grateful for it. So thank you. You make me wanna stay in the district, I will say that. I'll be very transparent. I look forward to my kids getting to Brush. So thank you very much.
I don't know if there's any more questions. We, a- again, stay tuned. There's a lot more to come, but we just wanna give you a snapshot. Um, and if there's not any more questions, I I will um, turn it over to uh Mr. Cable. We actually, um, just so you know, it's gonna be a short report because May, we'll, we'll know more in May about our summer program. Not because we don't. We're not planning. We're, we're trying to match the need uh with people's um wants. And again, um, so we're really surveying families and staff and different things like that. So. Um, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Cable. And like I said, we'll probably have a bigger presentation in in May, talking about summer planning.
A good evening, everybody. Uh, Dr. Reed kinda teed me up pretty good. Thank you, Dr. Reed. Just wanna uh give you guys a rundown. On where we are at with planning on the summer. Uh, hopefully everybody can see this. If you can't, uh, let me know. Um. So, uh, this is our Summer Academy flyer. Um, thank you, Ms. Marshall, for creating this. Uh, our whole philosophy around the K six initiative is to reacclimate uh our young learners to school-based instruction. With the huge focus on social emotional needs and critical core concepts and also that fun piece of it. Um, when these flyers go out to our, to our parents, and I'll show you here the timeline here in a little bit. Uh, we want them to be excited. Uh, we want the kids to be excited. Um, some of these kids haven't been in school since March. So. Uh, just a couple flyers here that Ms. Marshall's been, uh, and I've been working on, uh, just kinda laying out, looking at a two-week session. So session one, um, as you can see right up here, it's gonna run June twenty first to July first. Uh, we'll have a summer break, we're calling it in there, uh, basically the week of Fourth of July. So we'll take July fifth through the ninth off, and then session two will run July twelfth through July twenty second. Uh, they are sessions, however, um, we are asking for a full commitment um from the students and the families um and our teachers. Um, it's kind of a layout of the schedule, what that'll look like. Um, the plan is to offer full transportation, uh, full breakfast, uh, lunch for our kids. And even down here, uh, where you see the optional, uh, we're gonna have an optional free uh camp going on. Um, the vision is to have two camps simultaneously going on. We're gonna have an art music camp going on and also uh an athletics. Camp going on uh for those kids. And those will be ran um by our coaches, by our music teachers, art teachers, and different avenues from there. Um, again, academic, social, emotional learning, um, through hands-on engagement and fun, uh, fun, uh, outdoor activities. Uh, we wanna see our kids back in the buildings. Um, some of our buildings are at seventy-five percent now, which is awesome. Really just getting them re-acclimated and and ready to go, give them a fresh start, give them something to look forward to. And I had one parent uh reach out to me after the declaration saying, thank you. Um, eight thirty to three, sounds great, Mr. Cable. So, uh, just really trying to, trying to hit all avenues and also those camps, um, really trying to push our encore classes, all of our electives that we have. As well as continue to grow our youth sports, sports programs, band, music a- and so forth. Uh, our roadmap, um, plain and simple, um, it's numbers, numbers, numbers. And what I mean by that is. Uh, based off the declaration that we sent, um, just to get an idea who might be interested, uh, was the last question on the parent survey. And we sent out the fourth quarter declaration. And we had over five hundred parents say that they, they clicked yes uh for the Summer Academy in K six. We had another four hundred or so parents say maybe. And then we had X amount say no. So going into that, uh, I was excited. Uh, nervous, but ex- very excited about that number. And again, when I say numbers, numbers, numbers. Um, that goes right into this timeline that you'll see um below. Uh, we have our admin posting. Uh, we did our interviews, more to come on that. Um, teaching postings, teacher postings, uh, that was last Wednesday. Uh, we leave it open till um tomorrow, actually. Uh, very excited. I talked to Bill Miller and his team today. Uh, we have sixteen teachers uh that have applied. Four of them are academic tutors that we hire uh for the entire year. So really looking forward to, appreciate the staff. Um, I've been sending texts um all evening, trying to recruit a couple. Might do some lunches and dinners, but that's okay. I'm really trying to get to that twenty number. And then from there, um, looking at sending the signup letter to the parents K six on May fifth. Uh, the similar setup, just how it was in Google Forms, I'll show you that, just give you a quick snapshot of what that looks like. Uh, Dr. Continenza, um, and the teachers and principals at the elementary level are doing their data review, um, starting next week. Um, they're looking at star data, they're looking at um assessments that teachers use. So we kinda get a feel on, just in case we don't have enough staff to house the number of of families that want to attend. We wanna be able to then open it up to an invite system based off data and differentiated instruction. And what specific kids need and what levels those, those are at. And we'll have more information on that on May. Just waiting on those final staffing numbers to come in. Um, another thing that we're doing for staffing, I actually had a uh Zoom meeting the other night with Bowling Green State University. I was talking to some of their um graduates and even had, uh, I wanna say ten, ten or twelve. That graduated in education last year that didn't get a job, cuz not a lot of schools were hiring with COVID nineteen going on. Um, laid out the format to them, uh, showed them the hourly wage, what we were doing, social distancing. Um, the mask policy and all, and our full ensemble of what we've created, as you seen in the flyer. And a lot of positive feedback, a lot of college kids um already emailing myself, um, and Ms. Hoffenbach. And just so we've got some avenues going there. Dr. Reed um has a million more connections than I do. Um, she's starting to reach out um to universities in the next couple of weeks after we get a kind of a final number from our own staff where they're at. And how many we have. Um, after that data review goes on, that's when we purchase our materials. Um, Dr. Continenza and I met today. Uh, we were gonna use Scholastic for our readings. Um, we have a new ELA format or new program and a new math program. And that curriculum rollout and PD um for our teachers, uh, entire staff. Gonna happen at the end of May and uh we put before June twenty first. Reason we put that in. Um, right now, I'm not, I'm not trying to bombard teachers with professional development for a summer opportunity. Um, we're focused on the fourth quarter, they have AIR going on, May is gonna hit. So once we have our staff finalized, um, just gonna call a meeting. Uh, throw some dates at them, see what they're most comfortable with. And from there, we'll make sure that they're ready before that, you know, June twenty first start date. I did wanna note down here, uh, this is all gonna be funded through our CCIP, uh, Title One. And our ESER funding. So from the, our, our federal dollars is going towards everything that I talked about. So that includes um busing, the food, the curriculum, um, the boom, the camps. The um salaries, everything that we're trying to do here, we're able to budget for and put it through the CCIP and SS, ESER funds. Um, the parent signup form, uh, this should look very similar, uh, to those of you that have parents, uh, kiddos in the district. As you can see, same format as we did for each declaration, uh, but everybody was comfortable with this after doing it each quarter. So just gonna be asking the typical things and then those will be sent out, like I said, uh, at the beginning, sometime at the beginning of May. Also, uh, our handbooks, uh, we've been working on our handbook and we'll uh get this approved, but just wanted to give you a quick snapshot. Been updated and code of conduct and we are all ready to go. Uh, we're just now waiting on. Numbers, which we'll know better feel tomorrow. I'll start making those college contacts and just continue to follow that timeline and continue to follow our process. And then, uh, on the seven twelve end, um, really focused on the credit recovery side, which Mr. Williamson, uh, was gonna speak on here just for, just for a brief minute. Also, um, not gonna steal, uh, steal his thunder, uh, this is his, his teachers coming over the AP camps in August. And also, um, coming out of uh NT nine's office is the Bridge Academy. And this one, uh, this one really tugs at me, being the former principal at Memorial. Um, some of our kids, a lot of our kids, um, looking at our numbers in the eighth grade that are currently in the building. Haven't, where last time they'll be in school before they walk into the big house at Brush High School. The last feel for in-person school that they've had would have been of March as a seventh grader. So you're talking going from Memorial and getting that transition with Mr. Goka and Ms. Durkin and that whole process from sixth to seventh grade. Gets halted in March as you're getting ready for eighth grade. Now all of a sudden, you're a freshman. And o- over at Brush. So it's gonna be, be a huge thing is what we're doing. Um, started that planning process. And that's something that we'll do in August. So it's very easy and they'll get to know their teachers, they'll get to know Mr. Williamson and that comfort level will, will be there. So. Mr. Williamson, did you wanna add anything on the credit recovery or the AP camp side?
Um, credit recovery piece. We, we knew coming into this school year was going to be a difficult and tal- challenging year. Um, Dr. Reed, Ms. Thompson, Mr. Cable have stressed upon, um, the building principles to make sure that we. Embrace the idea of being able to pivot on a moment's notice. So we've been, um, pretty agile with pivoting. Um, I'm, I'm curious to see what it's like to sit down and not have to pivot so much. So hopefully that's coming. Uh, but with the credit recovery, um, we, we looked at our numbers from students who did not perform as well for a semester. We understand that social emotional learning, um, due to the pandemic has not helped that piece. So we're excited with the plan that we are developing, um, in, in conversations with both Dominic and Melissa. We've kicked around some notions. I know I have to uh meet with them next week to give them my recommendation on what we should do. Um, I'm gonna press forward and the credit recovery options that I would like to um make available to our students. I wanna make it as um convenient and available to our students that need it as possible. So how that looks exactly, we're, I'm, I'm, I'm excited to build upon that. It'll be a busy uh next several months. This summer will not be quiet. Last summer wasn't quiet cuz of construction, but this summer's gonna be different because of planning for next year and some of the programs are doing such as credit recovery. And then the next piece, the AP camps. Um, one of the things that we've wanted to do at Brush for the last couple of years is to get away from that mindset of. Well, we offer AP courses at the high school. Um, it's important to offer AP courses. It's important to offer CCP opportunities. It's. It's important to provide CCP opportunities out uh off-campus as well as on-campus. But when we say that we offer AP courses, um, that really undercuts our, our mission that we wanna do, which is have a true AP program. And to do that, we feel that it's a necessity to start right away in the summer. Preparing our students in AP classes. This year's kind of awkward year because of the pandemic. You know, parents are contacting us saying, hey, Mr. Williamson, don't take it personally, but they're gonna do what they have to do. As long as they graduate in June, we're good. Don't take it personal. Well, I am taking it a little personal and we'll deal with that later, but it is what it is. Moving forward, AP camp is gonna look like this. In June, our fine art, um, courses for AP. Are going to meet with the students who forecasted for um drawing and photography of the AP um piece for next year. And they're gonna have former students come back and talk to the kids about the importance of staying um on task. Knowing what your um mission is for this portfolio and this project. And they're gonna work with the kids for a week. Getting them amped up and excited to go into the summer so they can start preparing a, a portfolio that they're gonna turn in next May. Then the next piece of the AP uh camps are gonna look like, the core classes are gonna get together in August with our, our students forecasted. For AP classes next year. And they're gonna get acclimated to the kids. They're gonna talk about the summer work that the students are supposed to be working on. They're gonna have key pivotal conversations that usually happen the first week or two of school. We're gonna jumpstart that a little bit earlier. And have those conversations at AP camp. And they're also gonna come up with their own identity during these AP camp times with their instructors. So maybe the language arts group is gonna choose a particular type of shirt and they're gonna go in using the Innovation Lab equipment. And have their own special design so that they have their own little identity for that AP language art class. That's gonna be different than the kids that are in the AP camp class, who they made it known, they wanna take their lab coats and they wanna. They wanna decorate that using Innovation Lab equipment. So we're excited for that piece. Another piece of the AP camp, um, each student uh that forecasted uh AP classes, they're gonna receive a personal letter from my office. Um, we're starting at Endeavor next week. That's gonna be mailed. Hopefully the students will take pride in that. And when they graduate and they have their, um. Graduation parties, that'll be one of the um mementos they have on display as well as their diploma and the cake and all the good stuff. The other thing that we're doing for the AP camp is every student in the AP course is going to receive. A proud AP student lives here yard sign, strive for five. Um, we're, we're doing that. We're gonna make it known. Brush High School's proud of our AP students and we're gonna do, go and deliver those to our kiddos. So that their parents can have those proud signs in their front yard, showing the whole area, Northeast Ohio, that, hey. A proud um parent is home to an AP student at Brush High School. So we're excited about that piece. And then the bridge uh uh opponent, component that uh Dominic just talked about, we have some conversations that we're gonna discuss. Um, we know i- it's, it's interesting. Today and yesterday, we had more students in the building and a lot of ninth graders. And usually by this time, I know ninth graders names and I know their faces. Now we're just getting to see these students for the first time and they're like, who's this crazy Mr. Williamson and why, why? Yeah, so, um, i- it's unique. So we know that we have some, um, catching up to do. So this Bridge Academy is going to be crucial for how we start the twenty-one, twenty-two school year off on the positive foot. So. Uh, Mr. Cable, I don't know if there's something else you wanted me to add?
Nope, that was it. Appreciate it, Mr. Williamson. So, well, that's uh, that's our. Roadmap, vision, um, planning, and uh we're under the works and really excited. Any questions?
I've got a question about the AP camps. Are we talking like a week or are we talking a day that they get together?
That's a great question. Um, so when we talk about this with the AP instructors, the faces were. It was interesting. I wish I had a camera that day. Um, their eyes popped out and they're like, are you looking for something every day for a week or two? And I'm like, no. I'm looking for us to host an AP camp from a Monday through Friday. Understanding that there's gonna be some kids having to participate in multiple um sessions with multiple different teachers because of the AP classes they're taking. So we're looking for each AP instructor to do one to two days where they'll get to know their kids, they'll talk about some things happening in the class. And then we'll have a little picnic at the end so that the AP kiddos can get together with the teachers and they can have a nice little moment. And then set the stage for what's gonna happen come August, which is crucial because, you know. Ms. Falkenburg taught the AP English course, so you know, you know exactly what it takes. Uh, students. Shouldn't be asking us, hey, you know, I like the class, but, but, you know, I wanna get out of it after a week or two. No, you're in it, you're gonna stay in it, and we're gonna do the best we can because you're gonna take that exam and you score three, four, five. Hopefully you get to take that score with you to whatever school you want to go to and they'll accept it and count it as a college credit. And it's a great day for you, it's a great day for your family. So that's our plan.
Thank you. And you can see what, you know, part of what we're talking about this evening, and I'll present more of it. At our um regular board meeting as part of my superintendence. You know, this is the RRR, for those listening, it's our, you know, our, it's our. An addendum to our strategic plan, Destination Twenty Twenty Three. Really, it focuses on three phases because of the pandemic. Re- reopening, uh, recovery. And then, you know, that wasn't gonna be enough for us just to recover. And and the, the third piece R is revitalization. And that's the, the growth piece that, you know, we're talking about. So a lot of the stuff that we're talking about doing is, is, is a part of the plan that I've submitted to the state. Um, we, we, we didn't just want summer opportunities just to be about, um, uh, recovery and, and. Uh, and things like that. We wanted to be enrichment, uh, hence the AP camp and different things. So we, we see these extended learning opportunities. To be for everyone. And it's not just about, you know, trying to make up for lost time. It's actually also accelerating learning and doing different things like that. So. You know, we can't do everything in one summer, but as you can see, we're doing quite a bit. We're trying to touch everything from a, a Bridge Academy to the advanced. Uh, to those that need to recover things. And and so I, I just wanna say kudos to the team and that means everybody. It's. Um, you know, it's a lot of work and a lot more work to get done too.
I see Leo's hand.
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate everything you talked about with the AP camp. I think. Um, that is wonderful and look forward to see how it, um, comes together. But my question really is, what's the plan to increase the number of students? Um, especially in the um minority, um, student group that, um. Are taking AP classes.
Well, let me, let me start the one thing, Mr. Williamson, you can actually, I, I think that is exactly one of the ideas behind doing. At least it was from my mindset, doing the AP camp, is that if we could, I don't wanna say recruit, I guess. Recruit kids that might be shy of, of thinking they, maybe they won't be successful, that if we kinda jumpstart. that if we kind of jumpstart them into building that relationship with the teacher, understand different things, that pretty much is that it, it, you know, it, I, I would say they would have some longevity in, you know, keeping that class, and, and again, that, that to me was one of the ideas of offering an AP camp, was really building the relationship thing, and in my opinion, the recruitment. Because if they, you know, in, in a non-pressure type situation of undergoing that piece, but Ms. Williamson, I, you know, as for the technical things, maybe you can explain how, how that's going to get done.
So, great question. It's the proverbial elephant in the room question. We know that as a staff, as a school, as a district, we need to do a better job of promoting all students, particularly our African-American students, into the opportunities that are available right now. And one of the things that we have to do is we have to reach them at their grade levels before they get to the high school. So one of the things that we did last week, I met with Mr. Matthew Bryan and Ms. Megan. Sorry, just escaped my head. I met with them for about an hour and a half last week, and we talked about scheduling at the high school and the end goal. And Melissa is going to be bringing up some things in the near future regarding Brush graduates and whatnot. I'm not stealing her thunder, but one of the things that I talked to with Matthew and Megan was, I don't want to see the kids leave Greenview to another place and not go to Memorial. And I definitely don't want to see the kids leave Memorial and not come to Brush. You know, there's a little kid going to N D C L right around the corner from the high school, and his mom has his proud Class of Twenty Twenty-five sign, N D C L lion, blah, 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 in their front yard, and it really irks me, and I drive by it every day just to remind myself that we're losing kids, and the only way we're going to stop that is by offering opportunities, AP, to all students. And one of the things we talked about, too, is within, my plan next year is to start the process of offering an AP course to our ninth grade students. Talking with Joe, we have the perfect class, we think that's going to be enticing for folks, and it's going to help stop losing kids in the area district schools. That's, that's also going to expose a higher level of course to a kid, it's going to provide rigor, and it's going to give students an opportunity to experience what an AP class is and not run away from it. And we need to make it so that it's fun, friendly, engaging, rigorous, and oh, by the way, guess what, when you graduate from Brush High School, not only are you going to be able to compete, but you're also going to be able to compete very well with the people that you're going to school with, so. That's one of the things that we're doing, we're going to each different levels. We're trying to go into some new course offerings, we're getting teachers that are engaging with their kids, which we have a lot of those at the high school, we're very fortunate, our staff is very good. So we're going to capitalize on what they bring to the table, and I think you're going to see the, an increase in the number of students participating that are going to reflect.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, I, I know, you probably can't, don't know, but you were breaking up a little bit, but hopefully we got most of, of, of the explanation there. So to be honest with you, stay tuned, numbers will tell. I mean, the fact of the matter is, and it doesn't just happen by accident, you need to have a deliberate plan. And I think that's one of the things that we're working on, we will certainly start to measure the success of our plan as we move forward in that piece, so. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Falkenberg?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we do, in, in answer to what Neil was talking about, I think, Mr. Williamson, you mentioned having some AP students go to those AP camps, maybe to talk to, to the kids, and I know that that really makes a difference to see, and we've had some wonderful African-American students and other minority students who've been very successful in some of our AP classes, and I think they would love to come and share, you know, what they learned and, and the benefit of sticking to the AP courses.
Any other questions? Really engaging conversation for just two, two topics here, good stuff. The, that, that's all for the discussion items this evening, but President Jones, there is a need for a executive session that, to discuss matters of personnel, if we could do that for a short time. I think we really need, let's see, I think it's just Mr. Cable and Ms. Thompson are needed for that executive session, and of course, Mr. Neil.
Okay.
You don't need to keep the people out longer than they have to, but just those folks.
All right, so just, do we need a motion first?
Yes.
Can we get a motion to go into executive session? It is now six fifty-five. We will be going into executive session for the purposes as Dr. Reed has outlined, personnel. And for those who are listening, we will not be taking any action. So we will, thank you for joining us this evening, and we will see you at our next meeting.
Okay, can we just stop streaming here?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.